We will now have a public hearing on the school calendar, Ms. Perkins. Okay, I'll call this meeting to order.
Very good. This is a brand-new meeting.
You know, all those years I was in Charleston, it's over. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor. Thank you, Ms. Perkins, for breaking my promise. Go ahead.
Ready?
Yes.
Good evening, Superintendent Stevens and members of our board. This evening, I am here to present our draft calendar for the 2024-2025 school year. A little bit of backdrop on the calendar, just a reminder. We do have to follow a guidance document that is provided by the West Virginia Department of Education. And within that, after we do approve this calendar, they actually have to approve it as well. But a little bit of backdrop, this year, we did meet with Jefferson and Morgan County calendar coordinators, as well as Mrs. Van Meter from James Romsey, because we all tried to coordinate the calendars somewhat together. It's interesting, all the counties have some very different dynamics. But we did come up with two very important areas. One is that we are going to have a week of week off from school during Thanksgiving. And also, our spring break is going to be a week before Easter this year. And the reason for that is it's very late in the calendar. So, we did meet and we got to discuss our calendar. They discussed some of theirs. It was great. We ended up coming up with a calendar committee that had members of principals. We also had service personnel and members from their representative group, as well as teacher groups. We had a parent that was on the committee and also some members of central office. With that, we had a very rich discussion, and this is the calendar that we did come up with. Looking at this calendar, the staff will begin on August 12th. And that is a full week with professional meetings, time to work in their classrooms, as well as their professional development opportunities that week. Within that week, we also have a faculty senate built in. Students will begin on August 19th. They will get two full weeks of school before the Labor Day holiday. That is what we did this year as well. We have a professional, our first professional development day on October 14th, which is Columbus Day, followed by a faculty senate day, which is going to be a two-hour delay. What we did find out this year, we had some two-hour delay days and early dismissals. We found out that parents and community liked having the same rather than split. So, we did decide this year in our calendar that all of our delays would be a two-hour delay. We will not have any early dismissals for faculty senate or our teacher prep days. So, that's a bit of a change. We also had to provide for Election Day, which is November 5th. Of course, our schools are used for polling places. Thanksgiving week again will appear the same week for all three counties, having that entire week off. Winter break this year is extremely long, and that's due to the calendar. It will be for two weeks. Students and staff will be returning on January 3rd. And something that our teachers really enjoy and our service personnel is when we come back from our winter break, that they do have that day before students come back to actually work and get their classrooms ready and also look at the semester grading. It is a long haul before our spring break. So, in February, something that's, we have a professional development day in February. But something we did different in March, and we actually got this from some of the other counties, is we added an hour out of calendar day, which gives a little bit of a break for those teachers and all of our service personnel. So, the reason for that, the spring break, is April 14th to April 18th. That is a very long stretch. So, that's something new. When we looked at the calendar, our professional learning days, we did try to strategically place them after a nine-weeks period so that not only gives time for our professional development, but principals in the mornings can get their staff time to work in their classrooms and prepare grades. Teachers will have a curriculum development day on April 21st. We'll welcome students back on April 22nd again after that spring break. That gives teachers a day to prepare and get ready to wrap up the end of the school year. And our last day for students will be May 29th and for teachers, May 30th. Now, keep in mind that if we have snow days, we do have built-in instructional time that we get approved by the State Department, which allows us to, the first five days, if we have five snow days, are what I'm going to say, non-instructional days. And that's built in because we have 30 additional minutes within our school day. And then, if we have more than five days, we would have remote learning days on those other five days. So, we would be making up instruction. Hopefully, that won't happen. Last year, we did not have that. So, it worked out very well. And that's basically our calendar proposal for 2024-25 school year.
Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? First, do we have any questions, folks, staff?
I guess I have a question. So, after the two-week break, will it come back on uprading?
Teachers will, only. Only teachers. That is a teacher work day for them to come back and prepare. This made, it was a little challenging this year, just based on dates and timing, which we don't have any control of the calendar. But yeah, the teachers will come back on that Friday. It's a work day for them to prepare for the second semester. Yeah. That's a good question, because it was challenging. Right.
Other questions for members of the board?
I want to say it's a pretty good calendar. Seems to be a pretty good calendar.
It's a little bit different. We listened, like really tried to listen to teachers and our service personnel. And so, we really tried to place trainings where they were going to benefit the most and would also support them and give them time at the nine weeks. And I really think, well, actually, Morgan County is the one that gave us the idea about that add a calendar day in March, and because it is such a long, long stretch, we really liked that idea. We presented it to our committee and they loved it. So... That's why we came up with that day. It's a little bit different, but very similar to what we've had. Jefferson County is starting the same time we are. Morgan County is a little bit different, but we did have a great conversation with Donna Van Meter, because everything that the three counties do as far as calendar does impact James Romsey. So, it was great to have all of their input, and I think we worked really hard to put together a really good calendar.
I just, I would like, I'm hoping that teachers have more time in their classroom at the beginning of the year. That's the big constant thing what we hear.
Well, we do our best, but also with the new House bill, 3035, and all of the professional development that they expect us to do. I feel really confident that county's done a great job. We're ahead of a lot of our other counties, but we still have a lot of work to do to meet them, as well as training our service personnel, who will be coming, new first and second grade assistants in the classroom. We're still working on that. So, we give them as much as we can, but there's just some things we have got to be able to cover with them and train them so that they're prepared. And we do it throughout those five professional learning days that we have.
Questions? I have two. One of the concerns that we, we had a conversation with principals is that the assistant principals are tied up a lot in this training. And they were expressing concern that they just didn't have the help at the time. Another concern was that when we were looking at the total number of mandated training last year, I can remember teachers telling me, they're sick and tired of taking the blood... Bloodborne, whatever it is.
Oh, the, yes.
And we found out that...
The school safety trainings that were required by law to do.
Yeah, but we, but I think that it was every other year, and we were doing it annually. So, we need to make sure that all of those mandated trainings, we look and make sure that we're not doing more than what they have to do so that they have time to get back into their classrooms and prepare for their classes. But, and a third point, we have to make sure after the spring break that on that Tuesday, when we have the faculty senate, the parents understand there's a two-hour delay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because there will be a lot of confusion there without the kids having been in the school. So, we're going to, why don't you introduce our new public relation, public person there, back in the back?
Oh, okay. Do you want me to do it, or would you like Mr. Stevens to do it?
Well, that's Mr. Stevens.
Well, let's get through the, let's get through the hearing here first. Let's get through the...
Murphy's breaking rules again here, getting back around. Okay. I, we don't vote on this tonight.
No, sir.
How many more hearings do we have?
One more, and then you'll vote.
And we also, at this time, allow anyone in the public who signed up to speak on it. Do we have anyone?
Absolutely.
Who came tonight to speak on, concerning the calendar? Could you tell us, I'm catching off-guard here, who was the parent, the citizen member, and do you remember the members?
Oh, we did not have anyone from the community. The parent was, I gotta think, her name is Mrs. Carper. And we had Tanya Farmer from the service personnel and Joey Wfter. And I'm trying to think, there was another teacher there from our teacher representative group. But we had some other teachers as well and a number of principals that served on it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, well, we're at the seven o'clock portion of our meeting, so... I would first like to recognize Mr. Stevens, who would then recognize our principal from Spring Mills High School.
So, you want me to recognize Mr. Salfia?
Well, first, I'm going to get the lady in the back.
The lady in the back. Carla, would you stand up, please? Carla is our new executive director of communications, Carla Trotman. Carla is a local product, I believe was Hedgesville High School.
Yes.
Graduate. And she has served a number of years in, in marketing and relations for, most recently, the Shenandoah Health, Shenandoah Community Health Center. So, we're lucky to have her on board. And just tidbits for Carla, she is, she has a senior this year.
I do.
She has a senior at Martinsburg High School.
I'm in college.
And I was gonna say, and I thought you had a senior in college as well. Is it WVU?
Yes.
Okay, very good, very good. Yeah, she is, today is her very first day. And so, I just wanted to introduce her to our board and to those of you who are out there. She is, she's going to be our connection for communications. So, welcome aboard, Carla.
Thank you, happy to be here.
It's been a long first day, first day.
As a student.
What? That's just the other day.
Yeah, it's been a while.
So, to move on with our recognitions, for our caring educator award, I want to recognize Mr. Mark Salfia, principal, Spring Mills High School.
Mr. Stevens, Mr. Murphy, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight for me to introduce one of our most caring educators at Spring Mills High School, Ms. Hannah Horner. Ms. Horner is one of our science teachers, a very strong teacher in a very strong department. She teaches upper-level students, and she has had an impact on so many kids across, across the years at Spring Mills High. But the thing that stands out about her is the heart and soul that she puts into her kids. There was a situation earlier this year, and this is actually the second or third time that we've encountered something similar with her. But a situation earlier this year, a student who we were still getting to know, a new student at Spring Mills High, we were radioed for administration to come up to the upstairs science restroom. We get up there, we see a young lady, very upset, very distraught, in the middle of some sort of an episode, panic attack, or we didn't know exactly what at the time. The care that Hannah had put into this young lady, it was so noticeable, even from a distance as we're coming down the hallway. The girl was essentially crying in her arms. Ms. Horner made sure that she got her safely to us. We got her safely to the nurse. And then, when the bell rang, Ms. Horner came down to check on the student. And this, again, is early in the year, still a kid we're trying to get to know. And I said, "Ms. Horner, I know the student's last name, but can you, can you tell us her first name? We need to call her parents." And Ms. Horner said, "Oh, I don't, I don't know this student. This is not one of the students that I have in class." So, this isn't even one of, quote-unquote, "her" kids, right? This is just a young lady who knew Ms. Horner from the halls and from the building at Spring Mills High as a confidante, as somebody who she trusts, as somebody who she knew in her lowest moment she could go to. So, it's something that stood out to me right away. And honestly, like I said, this is actually the second or third time that I've personally witnessed this type of experience with Ms. Horner. So, without further ado, proud to introduce or proud to present our caring educator award to Ms. Hannah Horner.
Hannah, I had a chance to talk with Mr. Salfia earlier today. And when he expressed how much you give to the students, I started to cry. The dedication that you have is amazing. And the fact that just seeing you, your openness that you have about you, thank you for all that you do for our students. Thank you for all that you do to help our county. It is amazing. And I just, from everybody here on the board, thank you.
All right.
Would you introduce your family?
Yes.
Oh, yes, this is my husband Ben and my son Silas.
We're gonna take a photo opportunity. Yep.
Want to bring the box?
You don't need to. You can, if you want to take the award out, it'd be nice.
Silas, what grade are you in?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that. He's the big guy.
Can I hold it though? He's gonna put it on his shelf. He calls it his treasure, because he will collect it. So, we'll get a picture of the two of you together. Yeah, and then we'll do a picture of you and your family, and then we'll do a picture of everybody. Ask the guys to shuffle this way, just like these kind of right in the middle. Okay.
You want a chunk of that?
Yeah. Silas, then, can you come here for a sec? You can leave your coat, buddy. I know your ankle hurts. You good? We had a snow accident as well.
See?
It's not, it's a six-year-old also.
Silas, thank you.
All right, ready?
Got my back.
One, two, three. All right, does everybody want to get in together?
Yeah.
Have them with everybody with your family, and then we'll get them back.
Jackie gets us down every time, and then goes to stand in the middle. Nobody can see her.
I always get stuck behind that hairdo. Look like a dog.
That's why you're trying to get in there. All right. We're running for entrance. One, two, three. All right, and we'll do just the board, and you're next. You guys all sort of shuffle around this way, fill up the space a little. There you go. All right. One, two, three. You're done. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Good.
They're my babies.
What did you do to your drink?
Fell down, like, I fell down all over the day on a place that had already been injured a few days ago.
Re-injury. Karate, huh?
It was actually the day before. It was the day at karate, but it wasn't the, at karate was just the day.
She teaches soccer. It's awesome. Keep up the good work, buddy.
I hate the big kids. Thank you so much.
That hurt himself in karate. It was a re-injury. A re-injury, so. Yes.
Just to aside, Mr. Stevens is expecting his first grandchild at the end of next month or early March.
In a few weeks.
So, he's, he's...
He's practicing.
He's practicing and he's going down grocery aisles, looking at all the babies in the...
What's trending? That's what I'm looking for. What's trending?
Are you asking the man that?
My, my son and daughter-in-law have refused to share the name that they've chosen. They're gonna spring it on us at the last minute, so. I don't know if they can make it. Well, they made it this far, so I don't know.
On that note, I want to warn the public here that we're in the citizens forum. Any derogatory comments, profanity, or inappropriate comments will result in a muted microphone, which we don't have there, but we'll ask you to stop. And we remove from the thing. You'll have three minutes each. I'll butcher your names, so please be kind to be in that process. And we'll begin, and you'll come over here, and I'll ask the first person who's going to speak to step up. And the second person will be behind him so we can move quickly through the process here. I want to remind you that we are not allowed to interact in a conversation with you. It's not that we're sitting here like five bumps on the log or six. And, but we, but the rules, the law tells us that we cannot ask you questions or have a dialogue. So, we don't want you to walk away feeling that we've been rude in our silence. We're listening. And with that, I'd like Ms. Fry Gretchen to come forward and Angela Rush to be on the desk.
On deck.
On deck.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you so much for considering our proposal. We really appreciate this. I just wanted to just briefly say that, as I mentioned before, in 2015, the library had been funded at over $600,000. It was reduced to $112,400. And as a result of that, we were no longer able to operate the branches at 48 hours a week. And we had to reduce hours to 28 hours a week. So, we are looking, and I do realize this is a large increase that we're asking for. But obviously, if we could even get to the $300,000, $300,000 a year number, that would enable us to reopen the branches. They're currently operating at 28 hours. We would love to get them to 38 hours. I should also mention, when we did top one, in the discussion about Canal County and the fact that they actually were defunded in 2015, since then, they actually decided to include the libraries in the levy. And they currently fund their libraries at $18 a person. Currently, our funding is at $0.08 a person. So, clearly, Canal County, although originally they were challenged over, and they decided that they would actually move into the excess levy. And actually, they did actually end up funding their libraries. That's our current rate is $18 a person. I should mention also that Jefferson County currently does support their libraries at $1.52 a person. So, again, Berkeley County is below Jefferson County's as well. And the last thing I should, I just wanted to mention briefly was, in terms of what the, folks are gonna be talking a bit about the library here and about what the library does for the community, but I really wanted to mention too, some of our library services specifically for students. Currently, the library spends over $120,000 a year on overdraft titles, which the students can use through the SOAR app. So, right now, students do have access to the library's digital collection through the SOAR app. The other thing is we do offer free educator cards for all Brooklyn County teachers, even those who live out of state. So, you don't actually have to be a Brooklyn County resident. You can, as long as you teach in Brooklyn County, we give you a free educator card. Those educator cards include a much larger limit in terms of how much materials they can check out. And they can actually check them out for a much longer time. Some other things I should mention, of course, Mussumon South Berkeley Community Library. The library purchases almost the entire collection, that's in that library. So, that library's collection is pretty much all public library. A small amount of it is, is from the schools. But we do have quite a bit in there. That's the public library's collection.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all.
I didn't mean to do that. Finish your thoughts.
Okay. And anyway, but anyway, I do, I do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Ms. Higgins?
Hi, my name is Angela Rush, and I teach third grade at Mill Creek Intermediate School. For the last six years, our students have been walking monthly over to the Mussumon Public Library. And they love it. So, I just wanted to say that this is an important thing for students who cannot afford to go to a bookstore. In the last six years, our third graders have been going to the library. I have watched them find books that take them on adventures that they'll never get to go on, other than going to the library. The public library is an investment that we must make to grow our children. When I was asked my students what they loved about the library this year, this is what they said. "We love finding books that are not in our classroom library, and our parents don't have to pay for them." The other thing that they said is that they're learning responsibility, because they are responsible for those books, bringing them back and taking them back. So, they're, it's, it's a life skill that they're learning, and I hope that you will fund it. Thank you.
Ms. Higgins is on board. Or Ms. Finelli? I really apologize for that noise there. Sorry.
I'm Becky Higgins. I also teach at Mill Creek Third Grade. We have, like Mrs. Rush said, have been taking our third graders to the public library at South Berkeley for about six years now, and they love it. Love, love, love it. One of my students told me today that she said, "I just absolutely love that, Mrs. Higgins," when I told them that we're going Thursday, that she said, "I could live there forever." She's my reader, by the way. But they get their library card, and to them, that is a huge deal. They'll never get it. I mean, I would hate to say that, but nine times out of 10, they probably would not get that if it were not for us. And the fact that they get to take it home and they can go again when they're in fourth grade, and it's not just a third-grade thing only, that's a big deal. Also, one of my girls is excited because we don't have in our library at our school an author series that she is enjoying reading so that she's looking forward to going again next month or this week to get the next book in the series so that she can read it, that the library offers to them. And as a mom, I took my kids to the library. And just the extra things that the public library offers to our students outside the school day is amazing. And I think that if any way we can fund that to keep that going is very important.
Thank you. Ms. Williams-Stoess?
She's virtual, Pat.
Okay, she'll be virtual then. Okay, and after her will be Ms. Hitchcock? Okay, after the virtual. Go ahead, now.
Okay. Hi, my name is Mandy Finelli, and I also teach third grade at Mill Creek Intermediate. And just as my colleague said, the students get so excited just getting to go to the library. Like Mrs. Higgins said, the students get their own library card. And just seeing their ownership over that library card, they get excited when I'm passing it out to them and share that. A lot of them say that they go home, they then use that library card with their siblings or their family. I've had students that are fourth graders, fifth graders now, they'll come back and visit. And they'll say, "You know, I really remember when we would walk over to the public library." And like, "We see you walking with your class now," and we're so excited for them. And we use our card in the summertime and go to the different programs. So, it's a really great way to just connect our community with our students and really build that bridge between the two. But I think it's a really great program. It offers our students, like Mrs. Higgins said, more ways to get resources. You know, we have many books in our libraries at school, but there are different series or different books that they're excited about, and they know they can find those at the public library. So, I think it's definitely... So I think it's definitely a program that needs that extra funding, and it's definitely worth it. So, thank you all.
Thank you. We now have Ms. Williams-Stoels on the panel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Shanda Williams-Gold, and I am the interim Youth Services Manager at Martinsburg Public Library. I firstly like to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight on behalf of the Martinsburg Berkeley County Public Libraries, and a special thank you to Jessica and Terry for setting up a Zoom so I can speak virtually with you guys tonight. Before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to recognize those supporters of the library who are in attendance and who have chosen not to speak. Could those supporters please stand now? I know I can't see you, but... Thank you all. You can be seated. Thank you for being there. It's been an absolute pleasure to work with the youth of Martinsburg and Berkeley County, and I just wanted to take a moment to discuss a small sampling of the programs that the library system provides to local youth. I know Gretchen spoke on some of those that we offer to teachers, so I won't go over that again. But I wanted to talk about the weekly programs that we offer for the children, all of which are free for the community and which are a direct result of the funding that we receive from the Board of Education. From Lego Clubs to art clubs, the library fosters exploration of creativity, STEM skills, and fellowship in the heart of Martinsburg. And so too do we encourage love of reading and the written word, which is so important in children's education and developing them into adults who can foster this world with love of literature and language. Over the 2023 fiscal year, approximately 1,800 children and 600 teens attended programs at the library, and it is our hope that if you choose to fund the levy further, we would be able to increase the range of programs that we offer and increase that rate of attendance as well. In addition to the regular weekly programs that we offer, the summer reading program at Martinsburg Public Library and the rest of the libraries in our branches regularly draws in readers across the system. The National Assessment of Education Progress reported that most struggling readers lose ground during the summertime and experience what they call a summer reading loss. However, according to the NAEP, when enrolled in a summer reading program, 52% of fourth grade students experienced growth in reading comprehension. How that applies to our system is that in 2023, 360 children aged birth to 18 registered for summer reading program, and that resulted in a cumulative 864,000 minutes reading, just 864,000 minutes spent, an incredible worlds that they might not have been able to visit without public library funding. As you can tell, our library thrives on serving the community, and like with any community, the youth of Martinsburg are our future. And we really encourage you guys to consider additional funding, and with that additional funding, we'll continue to pour into the lives of students and youth through programming and equitable access to literature and learning. Thank you all once again for your time and consideration.
Ms. Hitchcock is next, and Ms. Kinsella is next.
Good evening. I would like to touch on some of the things that would definitely be positively impacted if the funds are increased for the library. I do work at Mussumon Library. I'm also a parent of a student at Mussumon High School. So I do get to see my daughter every day, and it's been a lot of fun. She is an honor student with the Honor Society and the Art Society, and she has these extracurricular activities after school, which she likes to go to. And then at the end of those, I pick her up after I drop my sons off at work in Winchester. We've had an issue because she cannot go on Mondays or Fridays, because the library is closed, and I cannot pick her up directly from the school when the program ends. So what she does on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday is she'll go to the library, you know, read, study, go on the computer, do all these things that she may not necessarily get to do during the day at school, and I pick her up. But on Mondays and Fridays, I've had to keep her from attending any of these activities because I don't like the idea of her standing out by herself on school rounds when it's getting dark early. And having a library open full-time, or even just increasing it so that we can have some partial hours on Mondays and Fridays, would enable a lot of kids to be able to go to the library after school. There's not a lot in Inwood. There's not even sidewalks, so I can't even have my daughter drive, walk home. But I really would like to consider you to consider this. Not to mention, we get a lot of senior citizens who will not go to the Martinsburg Libraries. Martinsburg Library is open Mondays and Fridays, but their parking is paid parking. There isn't much of it, and a lot of them find it very confusing and stressful to not know where they're going to park. One thing with Mussumon is there is ample parking, so we would be able to open up a lot more possibilities for senior citizens who just want to come in on Monday and send that freaking fax, but can't because we're not open on Monday. That's been a common complaint, you might guess. And that's about it. Thank you.
What was your question?
What was her first?
And this is Ms. Kinsella, and Mrs. Marty... Tony, Tony. I'm sorry. Tony. Okay.
Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of the Martinsburg Berkeley County Public Libraries. I wanted to take a moment of your time and let you know the impact that the library has, not on just me, but my children as well. Before we settled here in Martinsburg, we lived in various parts of the Panhandle and Maryland inconsistently, and sometimes without a home of our own. No matter where we lived, there was always one commonality my kids had, and that was visiting the public libraries. No matter what was going on or where we were, there was always a book ready to be borrowed and the smiling faces of our children's department librarians to greet and encourage us. It became our safe space, our home when we had none. And because of this, my children have grown with a love of reading and education. It was at the library that my kids grew to appreciate music and storytelling through the various programs geared toward babies and toddlers. My eldest read to me her first book on the couch of the Martinsburg Library. My middle child found her passion for Greek mythology and her love of reading through the guidance and encouragement and discussion with the staff here in Martinsburg. And my youngest took her first steps during a musical performance provided by Tony M. at one of the many summer programs the library offered. We were introduced, I'm sorry, they were introduced to more refined and steam programs through various workshops at the library, sparking their creativity and broader thinking. We found some of their first friends at the library, gaining both educational values and a sense of community. Even now, they share the jokes that delight us each week on the whiteboard found in the children's department with their friends at schools. I truly feel that my kids' education started and grew at our library. My kids joke about how the librarians were some of the first friends I established when we moved here to Martinsburg, and it is true. In their friendship, I found a place to discuss, excuse me, to discuss and share my love of reading, which my kids watched and learned from as well. They will always have friends, not just in stories, but in the staff there as well. No matter where my kids end up in life, they will always have a place, a refuge, at the local public libraries. I know this because I see it here every time we visit our library. Thank you for your time.
Tony and Pam, next.
I know you can't interact. Mr. Stevens, when you do have your grandchild, if you want to bring them to one of my shows, that will speed up their walking process, I promise. Thanks, Sue. Ms. Kinsella, just a second. I actually was just thinking, listening to everybody's stories, and I learned this from Mr. Rogers. If you could just close your eyes for 10 seconds, 15 seconds, think about just the moment you had at the library. Yourself, your own self, or maybe with your kids. And in Mr. Rogers' fashion, I will take the time, because I already have my thought. You have it? All right. Mine was putting on puppet shows for my mom when I was little, my first experience at the library. I remember the puppet shows. If anybody went to Martinsburg, you remember the little puppet theater and the raggedy old puppets, but that was, that was beautiful. It was a moment that I remember sharing specifically with my mom, who did not work at the time, but she stayed home to take care of me. And so that was my first experience with the library. And as I grew up, I, you know, went to Berkeley County Schools, was a student here, and some of your, your children I went to school with. I used the library system in high school. I used it in college. Back then, though, in 2003, the library was open late, and I would stay until nine o'clock till they kicked me out studying. And then after college, I became a teacher, and Miss Burkhardt was my lovely principal. And my class got to use the library. We, we went on monthly, monthly field trips to the library to check out books, and it was a service that they provided for free. I know it was not free for them to do that for us, but to us, it was free. And then after college, I had, after I, you know, got into teaching, I had children, and then I started taking my children to, to the library. And one of their fondest memories, I know if they were here, they would tell you, "We got chickens from the library." Chickens, yes! I'm not joking. They incubated chickens, hatched them. We got to take two of them home. And how could you say no to, to your kids? And, and most recently, though, my capacity with the library is through our nonprofit, the Tony Music and Arts Foundation. And what a partnership it is. The library absolutely, you know, we, we put on these, these musical performances for families, and a lot of these children do attend Berkeley County Schools. But something I do notice, the families that are young, they, they continue to come back, and they continue to do more within the library, and then they realize, oh, there's so many other services that they provide. There's two things I always like to say about the libraries. Number one is that they are the heart of our community, especially here. I'd see it most prevalent in Martinsburg, just because that is my main branch. They're the heart of our communities. And number two, they, they, they also have books. If you don't know this, they do. They provide so many other services for, not just for children, but for adults. And a lot of these adults are the parents, grandparents of our children here in Berkeley County Schools. So the services they provide not only make them better parents, better grandparents, and better adults and citizens, that in turn makes them better parents to the children that we have, which are better role models for our children here in the school systems, and they grow up to be better adults as well. So, yeah, when you're good at something, you do, Gretchen, in the library, yeah, you, you deserve the money that, that you're worth. And the library system here in Berkeley County is worth every single cent there, and more than, than what they're asking for. I think they're asking for too little, honestly, but they are absolutely 100% worth it. And I know we've all been the benefactor of our libraries here. So thank you all so much. Hit that buzzer.
Good evening, and thank you for the time. And never in my wildest dreams, Tony, after seeing you do your magic at the libraries, did I think I'd have to follow you. It's not gonna be good. My name is Pam, and I'm actually a courier for the Martinsburg library system. It means I go between the libraries in Berkeley County, carrying materials that others have placed on hold that weren't available at the library they wanted, and it's a great job. It's actually one of the best parts of my day to pull up to the libraries and see people waiting for the book or the movie or the activity set that they know they've placed on hold and is gonna be there that day. And to watch Tony and a lot of different programs serve the needs of young children and school-age kids and places to socialize and be curious in a very healthy, positive way is a happy part of my day. One of the sad parts of my day, though, are the days I go to Spring Mills or Hedgesville, and the library is closed, full, complete days, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays. They can't have anyone visit the building. They don't have any programs. Nobody can come and pick up their books. And so my hope is that we could find a way to see the value in getting those libraries back open so that they can serve their communities all days or the weeks, because our kids need that. Thank you.
This concludes the open.
Pat, we have one individual logged in who didn't sign up.
Okay.
But I'm guessing it was through her.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi. My name is Anya, and I go to the Martinsburg Library as often as possible. Right now, I'm not in the area. I'm back at my graduate school. I just, the first day of the semester just started. And I have to say that the Martinsburg Library is pivotal to me getting into graduate school. I use their interlibrary loans to research books so that I could smart, to the professors I was talking to. And I know that the library doesn't have a lot of money. And so that restricts the loans, the books they were able to get me. But the library was able to do that for me consistently, over and over, as I was prepping my grad school. And it consistently did that to me throughout my high school, as there's like many, when I was in high school, there were many personal books that I wanted to read, that I wasn't able to read, because they just were in the library normally. And so like, the idea of the, that the library needs money is like very important in my mind, because I know I'd be using their money every time I ask for an interlibrary loan. Every time I ask them to check out from West Virginia or from Connaught County to get me a book so that I can read it. And those books, if, when the library's not open, I, and the books come in, those other libraries are counting those days against me, giving me a shorter time that I can pick up the books, shorter time for me to read those books. And I know that many other people who try to get books at the library have these same issues or want their education to grow, as these other people have discussed earlier. And so I think it's really important that we fund the library, at least have more days open so that I can keep her getting books. It's really that simple. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ellis. This concludes the portion of our citizens forum. I will tell the people who've spoken that later in the meeting, we will be discussing these issues of the four outside agencies, as well as the other needs that the administration's brought up. So I don't want to chase you off. I'm sure you'd like to stay and watch that portion of the meeting, and I just want to make you aware of that. We are not at liberty to have a discussion with you right at this point, and so we will move on into the meeting with our address of our agenda. And that will be our consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have the regular meeting minutes, the chaperone requests, the use of school property, the extracurricular trips, the budget supplements and transfers, the comments of policy that we're putting out, school board effectiveness for review, as well as the Freedom of Information Act policy. Do I have any, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Send it.
And a second. Is there a discussion on the school board effectiveness, or any of these items here? Do you have any questions for Mr. Butts? Okay, all those in favor of the approving of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Declare the motion adopted. Okay, now we're moving down to the attendance report, and Mr. Hal Van Meter.
Yeah, thank you.
Those of you who spoke did a good job earlier. Okay, Mr. Van Meter.
Well, good evening, Mr. Murphy, board members, Superintendent Stevens, and guests. My name is Hal Van Meter. I'm the Director of Attendance and Homeschool for Berkeley County Schools. And I'm here to talk a little bit about school attendance for last year and how we're doing this year.
All right. Oh, point this way. Thank you. So, we're gonna have on the fly. All right, I want to start off with a quick quote. If students don't show up regularly to school, investments in curriculum, instruction and expanded learning opportunities are unlikely to make a difference. We have great teachers in our county, we have interesting curriculum, we have all kinds of great programs. But if students are not in school, they can't take advantage of those things. I'm gonna start today with a few definitions so that we're all on the same page. Average daily attendance is a percentage of students who attend school every day. Truancy occurs when kids have ten or more unexcused absences. And the key word there is unexcused. Chronically absent student is a student who misses more than 10% of the school year, which by the end of the year means they've missed more than 18 days. And the chronic absence rate is a percentage of students who are chronically absent. I highlighted that in yellow because that is the state accountability tool. That's how the state holds us accountable. So, the state labels every county that's over 20% as either on watch or needs support. Fifty-two of 55 counties last year were over 20% for their chronic absence rate. We were one of those 52. So, what is the difference between on watch and need support? Well, on, on watch county is a county that two years ago had a chronic absence rate. It stayed above 20% last year, but it improved. A need support county is a county that two years ago, their chronic absence rate got worse last year and they were also above 20%. So, our accountability is on watch because we did improve. This, I put up there to test your eyesight, I'm just kidding. There are all 55 counties listed on here. So, Berkeley County is right about here at 26%. I point that out to you because the state average is here, we're better than the state average. There were 17 counties in West Virginia last year that had a chronic absence rate over 30%. Seven of those counties over 40%. The worst being 57%. Now, we're at 25.6, I'm not happy with that, but it is significantly better than the state average and the state in general. How do we compare to our counties next door to us? Jefferson was a little bit better and I have a personal grudge with Jevyn Pearl, who's the director over there. She and I are fighting back and forth. Right now, we're beating Jefferson County, but last year we were a little bit worse. Berkeley was at 25.6, Morgan 26.5 and the state at 27.5. So, better than Morgan, better than the state, a little worse than Jefferson. Last year, again, we talked about average daily attendance a little bit. Pre-COVID, our average daily attendance rate was 93.1%. That was a year that was cut short. When we came back to in-person learning, we dropped to 91.5%. And last year we improved a little bit to 91.7%. With the chronic absence rate, we had the same situation. Pre-COVID, 19.3%. When we came back, we were at 26.1 and last year we improved a little bit to 25.6. The thing that makes me excited, go ahead, Mr. Terry, is that you can see that last year in December, at this time, a whole year ago, we were at 25.5%. The end of the year, we were just slightly worse at 25.6. This year in December, we're at 20.2%. So, my goal and my hope is that we are going to be really close to that 20.2% at the end of the year. I want to get under 20%. So, how are we doing this? How are we decreasing our chronic absence rate? Well, we're doing it in two ways. One, we're looking at our data, we're making sure it's clean and we're making sure that we're taking every deduction that we can. And the second way is to increase our student attendance, actually have more butts in seats. So, how are we doing that? We're cleaning up our data by encouraging parents to utilize our online absence form and improve communication between schools and families. We need to know why kids aren't in school so that we can address the attendance issue and so that we can take all applicable deductions. At the county level, what are we doing to get more butts in seats? Well, we're developing a countywide attendance team. And on that team, we have people from curriculum and learning, we have school administrators, we have school counselors and we have county attendance folks. What are we doing at the county level? We're providing information to schools. So, for example, every month, we send a chronic absence list, all the students who are chronically absent to all the school administrators. So, it's something that they don't have to do so they can spend more time trying to provide services for those kids. We provide attendance training for school teams. Last year, we, we trained all of our schools who had a chronic absence rate over 20% and we're continuing that this year. We provide tier three supports at the county level for families. Now, a multi-tiered system of supports, usually the tier one and tier two are done and taken care of at the school. And tier three is something that we take care of at the county level. So, if we're referring kids to outside agencies, that's one thing that we might do. Provide counseling through program, Project Aware, other things that we might do. We refer to Telemont and we take care of transportation for kids that are homeless and outside of our district. So, those are lots of things that we do with tier three supports. I was on the calendar committee that she presented earlier. So, we try to align our days, student days off with holidays that might not be days that teachers get off, but kids still get off, so that we give parents the best opportunity to spend time with their family without their kids missing school. And I'm also working with members of our state legislature, as you guys, as, as you, members of the board recall, I was at the meeting with our state legislators to talk about some of the things that we're trying to do. And I've given them some proposal from, from me personally. What are schools doing? Well, not every single parent and every single student has always had a great experience at school. So, one of the things that our schools are trying to do is to make schools open and inviting for students and families. We want families and students to feel welcome in our buildings. We want you to come in, we want you to be a part of what's going on. And we want the curriculum to be interesting and engaging. My daughter has no problems if she's not feeling well going to Hershey Park. She is excited and motivated to go to Hershey Park. I want her to feel the same way about going to her school. And the MTSS that I mentioned earlier, the multi-tiered systems of supports, we're trying to identify kids early on in the process. The chronic absence rate happens when kids miss more than 10%. At the end of the year, more than 18 days. So, at this point, if a child has 15 or 16 absences, they're pretty much sunk for the year. I don't think we can save those kids. So, we need to invest time with them early on. So, our schools are looking at what can they do with their kids, tier one and tier two, early on in the process. So, communication, I have all kinds of things here. I have when is sick, too sick for school. Pre-COVID, everybody knew if your kid is sick and you have a fever, vomiting, that sort of thing, you keep your kid home. Then we had COVID and if a kid sneezed, you stayed home. If a kid was in a car and rode with someone who'd been sick, they stayed home. So, we're retraining families when to send kids to school and when to keep them home. We also have information that we give for what can a parent guardian do at home? How can they keep their house as germ-free and our kids as healthy as possible? We also talk about absences adding up and I'm gonna show you my favorite piece of information here in just a minute. Now, I put up the old, I put up the old fashioned telephone because we have automated calls and we have letters and stuff like that that go out. But nothing works better than picking up the phone and talking to a person face, well, not face to face, but ear to ear. Sending out automated stuff is just not as impactful as a good old fashioned phone call. This is my graphic that I like so much. This is what I want the public to know. If students are absent two days a month, every month, they miss an entire year of school by the end of eighth grade. I don't think parents think about that. Two days a month, it just doesn't seem like that much, but man, it adds up. Three days a month, they miss an entire year of school by the end of fifth grade. And four to five days a month, they miss an entire year of school by the end of third grade. Those absences add up, I want everybody to be aware of that. And it goes back to that very first quote that just says, if kids aren't in school, they can't take advantage of the great services that we provide. Now, one thing, I'm gonna kind of switch gears a little bit. And I'm gonna talk about some public school alternatives because that also falls under my office. And we have three different methods basically that we have for public school alternatives. We have homeschool, HOPE Scholarship and we have our charter schools. So, did you know that in Berkeley County, we have about 2,450 homeschool students? We have over 400 HOPE Scholarship students. And I cannot tell you the number of charter school students because that's not something that parents have to share with us as, as a county. So, for homeschool, to homeschool a student, parents must have completed a one-time notice of intent to homeschool and have a high school diploma or a GED. And parents must turn in assessments at the, after grades three, five, eight and 11. Now, while they have to do assessments for every single year, they only turn them in after those four years. And Berkeley County schools cannot deny a student the opportunity to homeschool as long as the parents provide a notice of intent and have a GED or a high school diploma. Homeschool families can participate in school sports and homeschool families are able to be duly enrolled like public school kids. If families are homeschooling, those credits will transfer back to public school if students decide to return to public school. HOPE Scholarship. HOPE Scholarship is an educational alternative that parents can apply for through the Department of the Treasury. What's very interesting about this is that families of homeschool students or students that are not public school students are not eligible for the HOPE Scholarship. They have to return to public school for 30 days before they become eligible for the HOPE Scholarship. Families can get access to about $4,400 to help defray education costs for their children. That money does not go directly to the parent, but goes into an education account that they can use to pay for curriculum, private school tuition, stuff like that. Students must test yearly and score in the fourth day night to keep their scholarship if they are homeschooled through HOPE Scholarship. HOPE Scholarship students can participate in school sports and they may take classes at Blue Ridge CTC. HOPE Scholarship students can take classes in their local schools, but they have to pay a tuition and we have to have room for them in the building. Virtual charter schools. This is one that I found to be kind of interesting. Virtual charter schools are tuition-free schools, just like a public school. Last year, over 40% of all virtual charter school students were removed from virtual school for lack of attendance or participation and returned to public school or homeschool. Now, I don't bring that up to say, oh, charter schools are a failure, nothing like that whatsoever. No thoughts in my mind. But what happens are, we're responsible to enforce compulsory school laws. There are no attendance workers at the virtual schools. So, when those kids are removed and they come back to Berkeley County schools, then they be, they become our responsibility and we have to find a place in classrooms to put them or we have to get them into some kind of compulsory school law like homeschool or something like that. Virtual school students can participate in public school sports. And again, we must enroll any student who is removed from the virtual charter school for attendance. And again, that is a big deal. Now, we have 2,450 homeschoolers, 400 HOPE Scholarship. So, that's almost 2,900 students that we have to keep track of with notices of intent, with assessments at the end of each year, we have to put them into databases, we have to send that information to the state. For example, last year, June 8th, all HOPE Scholarship students had to have their information into the county. And June 15th, we had to have all of that information entered into the database so that the state could pull that. We had one week. Keep going. But we received no funding for them. So, the purpose of receiving funding is we are daily answering questions. We are daily doing work with homeschool and HOPE Scholarship students. Again, I support all of our alternative programs and all the things that we are doing with them and all the things that they're doing, but we don't get any funds for them. That's part of the legislative push that I've been talking about. So, at this point, I just open it up to any questions that you guys may have because I talked about a whole lot of stuff. Ms. Wong.
What do you mean when you say all applicable deductions?
So, we have two deductions that are counted as absences that I want to make sure we take advantage of. One is if a bus does not run and a student is absent from school, when the bus does not run, we do not take that as a consequence, nor does the parent take that or student take that as a consequence. Suspensions are also exempt. They do not count against the school system, nor do they count against the student. Questions?
I have a question. You mentioned homeschool credits will transfer back to public school.
Yes.
But you also stated that there were only a few, like three or four assessments that the homeschool students are required to do.
Okay, great question. So, assume that a student is a ninth grader and they've been homeschooled and doesn't matter what program they're going through, they'll get a grade at the end of their, each semester and they'll have a transcript either developed by their parent or developed by the program that they're taking. When those students transfer back to public school, that transcript comes back with them and they get credits for the, the credits of the classes that they've taken. The assessments at the end of the year are a requirement that the state says that they must do. They must have these assessments, but the assessment has no impact on their transcript or the credits that they earn.
So, for example, if I were homeschooling my child and I have, I've already given all these various credits, you just have to accept my word for it?
Correct.
Okay.
Hundred percent.
Is there, is there any data with the Berkeley County Virtual School of our absenteeism rate?
I'm, I'm sure there's data, but I don't work with our virtual county, virtual, or the virtual county, our Berkeley County Virtual School. Holly Branch takes care of that. If there's something, I can talk to her and get that information to you.
Yes, if, if you send us.
Oh, it's okay.
Just send us your, your question about that and we can get it, the answers. What question do you have with that?
Oh, just what the, what are our chronic absenteeism.
So, how, how she does participation would be one of your questions.
Yeah, with our, I can tell you this, with our virtual students, if they miss too much time, they return to public school at the semester.
In person.
In person.
In person.
So, it's the same thing that charter schools, virtual charter schools do?
Except virtual charter schools, they, after they miss X number of days, they're removed immediately. So, like today, for example, I got three notices that kids have missed at least 10 days in the West Virginia Virtual Academy. So, in another week or two, I'll get those same three students and I'll have to send people out to their home or find out where they live to make sure that they get enrolled or go to homeschool or go to a private school, but they have to do some sort of compulsory education unless they're 17 years old. It's, we have a lot of work for kids that aren't actually enrolled in public school.
Yeah.
That's, that's the reason I wanted to put this stuff on here. Again, I'm very support, my homeschool community, I love those guys. The reason I brought all this stuff up is because we spend a lot of time working with kids that are not Berkeley County school students. Yes, ma'am.
So, do you also feel that due to a poor reading score or students that are struggling with reading, that that also increases the absenteeism? Because students that are less likely to read are less likely to want to go to school because they cannot read. And they have stomach aches or they have cramps, whatever, all, all they're suffering from.
I think that is an excellent point and I a hundred percent agree with that. If, if I'm not good at playing basketball, I'm not going to the gym to play basketball. If I'm not good at school, I don't want to come to school. That's why when we have our countywide team, we have a teaching and learning curriculum person on the team so that we can talk about all the different things, especially how the curriculum plays into and how the engagement plays into getting kids to school.
Well, and they're just not reading. I remember when I was in the middle school, kids missed, a lot of kids missed P E day, so they didn't like to read.
And, yeah, that's what I was talking about. It, it, it's very interesting what encourages some kids to come to school, discourages others. So, that's another difficult thing for us, you know? If we have a reward day, for example, for kids that are doing really, really well, then the kids that don't get rewarded are less likely to come to school. So, it's, it's a double edged sword in how we do this.
Do we have a higher or average or, you know, like same or below, I guess, what the county's average is for absenteeism when it comes to our ESL students?
I would have to look. I don't know, I don't.
To, to his point for reading, it's, I think of kids that aren't necessarily speaking the same language, their ability to comprehend what's happening in the classroom.
Our number one group for chronic absence rate is our McKinney-Vento students, which are our homeless students.
Okay.
Last year, we were right around 50%. It's a really. It's a really big number. Most of our subgroups are pretty close. Low SES was a higher one. So we, besides that McKinney Vento group that was up in the upper 40s, most of them were mid 30s or below.
Okay.
Questions? I have a few. I'm kind of torn on this because I know some children's parents are working two and three jobs. They oversleep, the kids don't get up and catch the bus and they're doing that. Some children are living in tents in our community and that. But, and I also know that I've had people argue with me that if you hold children back, the more likely they drop out. And my response is, well, they have to drop in before they can drop out and some of them don't come to school. We've, the board has been provided, a list, school by school, the five chronically absent students. And what gets me is that we are promoting students who are missing more than half of the school year. Now, I know that you have to take them on a case-by-case basis. We don't like to retain kids, students more than once in a segment. But, but you have to come to work, get paid. It's a lesson that you have to be taught at some point, otherwise you're not going to be employed. And I, like I said, I'm looking at students here who were promoted, who missed 73 days out of 180. I saw one and the school is on watch. Well, not this one. One missed 102 days and yes, was promoted. They were here 43% of the time. 78 days. Here was one who was here 42 days out of 180 and was promoted. Sometimes I think this board should not betray the confidence of the child's name, but call in the school principals and say, "Why is this happening? What was the reasoning for promoting this child?" Granted, a lot of them could say it was not, we didn't see it was going to do any good. The point is, you have to be at work in order to be rewarded. Here's a school, the lowest, the kid, the student was here 38 out of 180 days promoted. The next student, 59 days, 32, almost 33% was promoted. Was here 66 days, 37% was promoted. And then it gets better. They were here 79 days out of 176 and the other one was here half the time, 51%. So I see us not holding the children accountable. Now, I also, as I said, I know there were times there was a student was, was here 39 days, was retained. So there is hope. But it, but here's a student in the same school who was here half the time, 90 days, was promoted. So when you go through this data, which our staff has provided us, and I look at the transitional program court cases. We're going to have a meeting and I think the judge has COVID, but we're hoping it will be well by the day we're scheduled to meet. But I have here attendance referrals for the transitional program court cases. Surely we went to court more than 10 days, 10 times last year, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. That was just the transitional school, yeah, okay. But they, one other point in your presentation, well, here's a question.
Sure.
There are grants to the community foundation.
Okay.
I think we ought to fly for some alarm clocks to give some of these children, if we don't already do that.
We do give alarm clocks to some of these children. We provide, here's one of the things that, a couple pieces of information I didn't share with you that I'll share with you now. Out of the thousands and thousands of absences, we have 140, 141,600 absences as of today. Only 60,000 of those are unexcused. The vast majority of kids are missing for what would be considered legal or legitimate reasons. Part of the reason that we have a teaching and learning person here is because we're talking about the accountability, like what you're talking about. What, what can we do to encourage them to be here? And the legislature, I don't know where the paper is, it's in here someplace. But what I sent to the legislature to request was to reflect a total number of days that kids could miss instead of, because right now, the only, the only days that are, parents are held accountable for are unexcused days. And we're held accountable for unexcused and excused days. So I'm asking for a flat number just across the board, like 15 days. When, when we have 27 and a half percent of all students in West Virginia missing more than 18 days of school, many of them, well, you see the numbers, what they're missing, you know, that's the type of stuff that just is, you know, I can't force them. I can't make them come. And while I can hold them accountable for unexcused absences, I met with most of my attendance worker staff today and we're looking over the different schools and the different chronic absence rates and the different numbers. And when I'm looking at the 20-plus absences, the majority of these kids are all excused absences. So while we can take some people to court and have some accountability, I'm kind of stuck. And by the time now, even if I filed on them today, I wouldn't be going to court till April at the, at the earliest. Oftentimes, going into court over the summer, kids have either graduated or moved on to the next grade. So court system is, is a bit of a frustrating kind of thing because you feel like there's something there that you can hold people accountable with, but, but it's, it's not really like that.
That's a discussion when we go to the court and I think you're on the list.
I'm on the list. I'm prepared and ready to go.
I do remember the days though when absenteeism played a huge role when our child was forever alone.
We had a Z policy back in the day. And that Z policy was deemed to be illegal. So that has really taken away a lot of our strength, a lot of our ability. So that has definitely been, that was a definite deterrent. Let's just put it like that.
Yes, it was.
Just, what's the difference between homeschool and homebound?
Okay, homeschool is when a parent decides that they're going to educate and oversee the education of their child. To homeschool, parent says, "I'm responsible. I'm going to find the curriculum. I'm going to find the teacher." They can put them on a virtual program. They can teach them at home if they want to teach them at home. But it's all based on the family and the parent oversees the education. Homebound is when a child is too ill emotionally or physically to come to school. And homebound is supposed to be a short-term disability type thing. Like I broke, I broke my Achilles shoveling snow or, you know, something like that, where you can't get around for four or five weeks. Then we put them on homebound, we provide them with an instructor or we provide them with a virtual opportunity to get instruction and then they come back to school. If they have a mental health reason why they're out, they're going through some sort of counseling or they have some sort of program so that they're working on getting better so they can come back to school.
Yeah, not for tonight, but I've heard concern about the virtual program we had last year versus this year, but we'll save that for another discussion.
Another person, because I'm not well versed on that.
Okay, okay. Do we have other questions for our presenter? Well, before you go, thank you for the improvement. My name is, it's encouraging.
Tony M. did a, did a spot for us. Vicki Bullet did a spot for us. We've, I've been to both rotaries and presented on the radio, in the newspaper, at the one board meeting with the legislators, talking to the legislators. I feel like every time I go someplace, it's all I'm talking about. And I'm trying to get, just get the word out that what are the expectations? What can we do to help our kids, you know? And again, if they're not in school, they're missing out. And Berkeley County Schools has, like, just like the library talked today about all the cool things at the library, lots and lots of cool things in Berkeley County Schools. Lots of clubs, lots of activities, lots of instructional programs. It's really a great place to be.
And before you go, I know you're involved at the state level as well on the same issue and I know you put a lot of road time in as well as preparation time. So thank you for that as well.
Yeah, I, I would like to say that I'm very proud of the accomplishments that, that our attendance director, forget about all the other things, but for, for the attendance part of his, his, his job, he is a go-to guy for the, for the state. They talk to him when they want opinions and we're, we're going down a good path right now. If you just think about the numbers, for us to get down to 20.2% right now, that's fantastic. And if we're able to even stay close to that by the end of the year, the marked improvement that we'll have there is outstanding. So I just think that Hal's done a great job and we need to keep in mind, you know, attendance is a predictor of success in the classroom. It's not the only predictor of success in the classroom. There are students that are going to be able to achieve whether they're in a class or not in a class. But I believe, and Hal believes, that they will achieve more and achieve better if they're there. So.
Plus they'll eat and they're safe.
Yes.
And they have.
Well, I didn't even want to go to all of those yet, but yes.
Anxiety has improved, mental health has improved, just, I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Bamber.
Thank you.
Mr. Butts?
So tonight, we're bringing back the monitor item. This is the financial statements, our fiscal year and '23 audit. If you recall, back in the September meeting, we had approved the draft financial statements before they were audited, they're now audited. We have what's called an unqualified opinion, which means it's a clean audit, no findings. None of the numbers really have changed since the September 18th presentation. So I just want to highlight two pages, the most important page of the document are 17 and 18. So to highlight on page 18, that's our financial statements by funds. That's our revenue coming in and expenses going out. So in total for the year with all funds, we had revenues of $413,269,831 and we had total expenses of $274,067,976. Now, again, a big jump in our revenues this year was the sale of our bonds in May. I believe it was $124,940,000. So that's a big number in the financial statements. Again, this is the, we have our S of COVID funding in these financial statements. And then, of course, what's most important to us is the general operating budget, which is the first column on page 18. So if you notice, for the year, for the general fund, we added $7.6 million to our fund balance to give us a total of $36.295 million. And if you recall, again, before COVID, that number was about $7 million. So since the years of the COVID funding, we have raised that about $29 million. Just also a reminder, this is the last year '24, we have a majority of the COVID funding. It ends September 30th of '24. So we need to be mindful of what we've been able to build over the last several years as we head back to pre-COVID activities. And if you're in page 17, I noticed this number that former member Murphy likes to look at is our unrestricted unassigned fund balance, which is $34,606,951. So if you have any questions about the numbers, let me know. Everybody has a copy of a bound audit report in front of you and that is my report for the audit.
Page 17, would you repeat where you appear on there?
Page 17, column one, third number from the bottom, you, you like the unassigned general fund balance, which is $34,608,951.
Okay, any other questions from members of the board? Yes, ma'am.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Because we're talking about levy.
The school access levy.
Yeah. So if we were to hypothetically speaking, approve to go to 100% for the levy and we were to hypothetically increase funding to, let's say, the library, to the $300,000 that they were referencing this evening?
Well, my job as treasurer is to look out for the school board.
I know that, I know that, I know that. I know, I know, I'm getting there. What would be, would we be talking just, you know, a few thousand that we would be needing to pull from, you know, a, I'm sorry?
Let her finish.
No, no, I apologize, I apologize. You know how in, in personal life, so I'm going to, for, for those who may be watching that are parents that are, might not be as well versed in business-related items, typically a family or a household would have a checking account and a savings account.
We hope.
We would hope, but using that as the example, we have our own fund that we put in money to, that we can pull, you know, for emergency sake.
Yes.
Okay. Most of the time, that would be in a savings account for a typical family.
Correct.
Okay. What type, if, let's say we are increasing the levy and we are increasing our funding to, say, the library, would we still be able to put back into a savings account? Or would we be pulling from the savings account every year to have a, quote, balanced budget?
Let me answer that two ways. One, prior to COVID, we were using our savings account to balance our budget.
Okay.
So prior to COVID, prior to federal additional dollars.
Correct.
We were spending more than we were bringing in, so therefore we were reducing our savings account.
Right.
What Mr. Stevens spoke of earlier, we have more than a million dollars of new expenses. We're not going to raise a million dollars with the excess.
Right.
So every penny you give away is money that is not going into savings and we're already drawing from the savings to pay for these increased expenses. So I'm just saying be very careful.
Our trend, our trend in Berkeley County, and we have not varied too far from that trend with, with this board and, and the year that, that I was in, in control of the expenditures and that we worked together to, to work on our budget. The trend would be on a normal year, we would still have to utilize funding from our savings account to balance where we are. We, we're spending that. And to a certain degree, we need to spend some of that, but we do have to have a savings account. We got to save some of that as well.
Right, right.
So if, if right now, we're already, we already know that we're going to end up spending that for the foreseeable future if we don't change our spending ways, when you bring in an item that you, whether it's $100,000 or a million dollars, it's coming out of that savings account right now or it's going to, we have to cut another program.
Right.
Or trim money from other places to be able to do that. So that's where we are right now. And like you mentioned, we're already looking at this coming school year, next school year, at an increase of well over a million dollars because I just talked about two little things that are in a million.
I'm just trying to get a lay, a lay of the land from a hypothetical, because we always do that. You know, if we're looking at buying a new car or whatever, we always look at, well, we should, should be, looking at our budget to see if we can financially afford it.
Right. So this last from our December 11th meeting and this is not hypothetical, this is real. The block red is what we've done in COVID, adding to our reserves. The four years prior to that, we have used our reserves every year to balance.
And so we're going to be returning to, to.
Yes. Because we've hired additional people in the last several years.
Our reserves will be up because we have been able to bolster them over the last couple of years.
But we will be starting to take from it like.
But we will then start to expend more than we're bringing in, again, if we don't make changes.
24 will be our last year that we act, this is, this fiscal year, June 30th, 24 will be the last year we probably add to our reserves, given the COVID funding. Fiscal year '25, I believe, is when we'll start using our reserves again unless we drastically change how we've done business to this point.
Well, we have in the past before, you know, long ago, I mean, we've had, I look at the warehouse where we, you know, had to go over budget because of some things like that. It was over $500,000. You're able to pull that from somewhere.
Correct.
I, I agree that we do have the funds to do that.
Yeah, we do, we absolutely do.
But we can't keep pulling those funds like that to.
Exactly.
Over and over and over.
To have it be a perpetual thing, that's.
It's one thing to purchase land for new schools, it's another to pay salaries out of the reserves.
So I have a question. So how much are we, previously and how much are you?
So, I have a question. So, how much are we, previously, and how much are you, would you, would your guesstimate all be maybe over? Like you said, you were, prior to COVID, you were having a difference.
We were already, we were already all the way down to $7 million prior to COVID.
No, no, no. What I mean is like, for example, we're bringing in $7 million, but we're putting out a lot of money.
Well, we're spending...
A million dollars a year or, you know?
Guesstimate.
So, each year's different. It's not a guesstimate. Each year's different. So, we, you know, 2.3 point, or 2.8 million. Then it's 1.5 million. Then it's 1.2 million. And then COVID hit, and we were able to increase it. So, we're spending...
And...
So, a little, like a million and a half around typically...
Of how we operated back then. That was before security and safety personnel. That was before the software.
So, right, so that jumped up, so...
It's before pay raises for the state. I mean, the state's given pay raises in there along the way. So, there's a lot of things that have changed since '19.
And we're in a major building construction phase right now. While a large number, a majority of it is scheduled, and we want it to be paid for by the bond, we do know that as time goes forward, we've got to be able to pay any increases. So, for the next two or three years, we'll probably be hitting this a little bit hard.
I'm trying to figure out, maybe in a fraction, how quickly the reserve will start to deplete based on, you know, except all our estimates, none of us know what's going to be happening. But, you know, we know, say, we're at 36 million. And we know, okay, every year is going to go down $2 million, every single year. So, you know, that, so give us a sort of an idea, okay? Because we can, like, it always, anything to be increased, that's, like, even like what I can collaborate for, or any other organization, it can always get cut in the future if we need to.
Not if you put it in the levy.
No, if you put it in the levy, it's...
Then it would be, how long with the...
How long?
Four years.
Four years. So, you have to...
Five, five.
Five years. Okay. And that could, well, okay, so the first year might not be, quote, significant, but the second year could be.
Well, this board is responsible for passing a balanced budget. You are responsible for it.
Every year.
Okay. I'm just trying to get, make sure I get the much information out of the class.
Also, we have to, I'm sorry.
No, I just want to say that, nothing.
Well, we have to, the state requires us to have a 3% to 5%. So, you all say you want 16%.
Well, we want 16.67. And if you do that, so we're scored. So, the state scores many departments. Finance is one of those departments that they score. The minimum they want is 3%. They recommend 5%. If you meet the GFPA at 16.67%, we get 15 extra points for meeting that standard. Where at 16% right now, we don't get the full 15 points to meet that standard. We are graded as an organization by the Department of Education and the Finance Department as well.
And I think I told you this. I was sitting in church a couple of weeks, months ago, in the scripture lesson with the three servants who had the talents. And the first two went out and invested the talents and came back with a bigger return for the master. And the third one buried the money and brought back the dirty bag of money and said, here, I didn't lose anything. And I worry that we tried to put more into reserve getting these points than we put out there into our rank and file and try to retain our employees and give them the equipment to do.
And I hear you, Pat.
Yeah, I know you do.
But that's how ESR funding has built our reserves, not our operation has built our reserves.
Yeah.
And I remind you, the board, and we've talked before, one payroll for us is over $8 million.
And we have to make some tough decisions personnel-wise here in, before March, because we are not going to have the millions of dollars for the personnel items that's now being funded, that thing. And I failed to bring to the board some of that information you gave me. I'm planning on doing it. The number, I think it was 78 positions or something that are funded. And we have to, we have to do that. We have to work with Dr. Schoey. How many of these classrooms that have permanent subs? Or we want to move people who are ESR-funded back into the classrooms so that we have certified people there? We have a whole array of different issues facing us here. And plus, I don't want to see this board go through what it went through back years ago.
2016, we cut a lot of positions.
Before that, before that, when Mr. Flanagan, who just died here a couple of weeks, sometime ago, was superintendent, and we had a deficit. And then Ms. Dr. Mink came in, and the superintendent was out substituting because he was substituting for me while I was off to the legislature. But we have to have a balanced budget. But we also have to balance the people who in our community that we work with, because they're not, they're helping fill voids that we're not doing in the classroom. And we have to balance the needs of our classroom teachers and balance the need to retain our classroom teachers, bus drivers, service people and all that. And so, we're caught between this, how much of a reserve do you have? And how far down do you push, playing a dead man's curve here, I guess you call it, to get, to keep this system running and not have, and just maintain that balance? And that's the issue we face. And we have all these different people coming at us.
Everybody has not enough money.
We have to say no to people, staff, community. And we have to make sure that we walk out of the, walk out of the budgetary process in May with a balanced budget, as you said.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
When you talk about the points, what do you, what does that do for us?
Well, it keeps us all, it keeps us all of a state watch list or a state takeover.
And that I realize, but if you have to have, if the requirement is to have a 3% to 5%...
That's the minimum.
That's the minimum.
Yeah, minimum.
That's the minimum, right.
Which, I mean, that's what we had for years.
Well, but, okay, hold on, hold on. So, the 3% to 5%, it's designed so that school systems will have emergency funding to pay, to make a payroll, for instance, as Mr. Butts was talking about. We, and that's based on if you are, if you are within formula. We are over formula. So, the 3% to 5% is not going to make our payroll. That's what, as he was talking about, we now need $8 million to be able to meet just one payroll.
And if you recall, back, I think it was 2016, the state legislator in the middle of the year said, hey, school systems, you're going to get 1% back in your budget. We worried well past personnel season. We can't make changes. We had to eat that and absorb that. We don't know where we're heading. I just know what I'm supposed to do as the treasurer.
And I wasn't criticizing about that. I just didn't want, worry what you meant by points.
Yeah. So, they score every school system in different categories. And one of them is finance. And there's certain things we have to meet, clean audits, timely budget processes, publications. I mean, there's, there's at least 10 factors that we get graded on.
Does it give you a list of counties how they rank?
There is, there is a list.
I'd like to see that list sometime, just to see where we rank on.
Total ranking, all those things.
We're good.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Butts? This is the monitoring item, I believe, so we do not need a vote.
Nope.
Okay. Let me think. What's, what's next for us, Mr. Butts?
So, this was, the audit we just presented was the last year of a three-year contract for an independent certified public accounting firm to do our audit. We need to, again, go and establish for the board to pass a resolution for us to go out and get another CPA firm for the next three years. Required to do a resolution to send to the state auditor's office so they can approve us. We then get on the list at state auditor's office. And then there's independent public accounting firms that's also approved by the state auditor's office. And then we put out an RFP.
So, we're at 9.1 on our agenda then, as an action item?
Yes, this is an action item.
Okay.
So, our past practice for our audit committee has been representation from Epic, which is Damon. Jackie, which represents us on the James Ramsey Board. And then myself as treasurer, Ron, as superintendent. That has been the audit committee in the past. So, we're asking for this board to pass a resolution that we can send to the state auditor's office, asking for our school system to go out to get an independent public accounting firm. They'll then put us on the list. And then later in the year, we actually put out a solicitation. It's scored with a scoring sheet that the state auditor's office provides. And then we'll engage an auditor at that time for the next three years. And it will be for Berkeley County, James Ramsey, and Epic all same time.
Okay, in your packet, you have a resolution already drafted. Do I need to read it, or you all have it on your finger? Need a motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Ms. Powers, seconded by Ms. Long. Discussion, questions? All those in favor of adopting the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I ask, have it declared a motion adopted unanimously.
So, we'll get that signed, that resolution signed, and we'll get it down to the state auditor's office.
Thank you, Mr. Butts.
Okay, we're at the item now.
Hold on, Mr. Butts. 9.2.
9.2, school excess levy. What's the, we have this item on the agenda now. We have two requests and also how to spend that request. Let's, let's go, before we go to the 100% or 98%, let's talk about the agencies. Because one of the other issues, or would you rather have the 98% and 100% behind you first?
Yeah, I'd rather that.
Okay, all right. Motion on, I need a motion to set the levy, excess levy rate.
How move to set the excess levy rate at 100%?
Do I have a second to the motion? Okay, the motion's been made to set it at 100%, which is $904,000.
$903,21.
Okay. Okay, are there amendments to the motion? Discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion is passed unanimously. Okay, now, we are at, any items, any language that we need to put in the levy, excess levy? Now, do we do it now, or do we do it later?
I think we need guides as a draft that we can then send to the attorneys then to bring back at least the framework. And then the numbers can be determined at the next meeting. But we need guidance.
We don't have to do the numbers.
But we need some guidance on what to give to the attorneys.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be final numbers. You don't have to take an action on it. If you can, if you can throw out some information for each of the, each of them for us to look at. And like Jackie mentioned, a different organization. I mean, just need to have it all encapsulated so that we can talk to our legal counsel.
So, technically, we could just say for right now, where we want to keep those organizations that were in the previous levy, in the current levy?
Sure.
Yeah, you could say that, but...
And then add.
And then add, right, and then add whatever.
Are you saying keep them at the present, like?
No, I was just listing, no, no.
She was just saying the organization list, not how much.
Correct, just the list of the organizations, not necessarily the amount.
And see if we can add the other one.
Okay.
Is that the only organization that you're asking about adding? I know you are, but I mean, for the rest of the group.
I don't care about the rest of the group.
That was, it's the voting decision, and that's already in the...
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's vote on asking counsel to check into the Apollon Theater's eligibility to be put on the excess levy. Ms. Long makes that motion. Now, I have a second. Okay, the motion's moved and seconded by Ms. Long and Mr. Martin. Discussion on the motion. I recognize the lady who made the motion to begin.
Discussion? The discussion is, I would like our legal counsel to determine whether we can add that to our excess levy call.
Okay. Although, further discussion for or against? Okay, all of those in favor of the motion by Ms. Long signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I ask, have it unanimously. It will be checked out by counsel to whether it can be placed on the levy. Okay, other items, other discussion. Mr. Wright.
Are we allowed to ask?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, with leave of the board, I will allow any objection to Mr. Wright asking a member of the audience a question. But hearing now, Mr. Wright, you may...
Oh, no, it's, I have the amounts that the library board threw out before previously. And we had various speakers talk about extending the hours, et cetera. So, we may not decide everything tonight, but at least to give me something to think about later is, just wondering how much, does it not go for $200,000 to add digital materials? But then it goes up to 300 in order to add hours? So, is there an amount, what would be the least amount that you could extend the hours? Could it be between 300, 200, 300, or?
Yes. Yes, and I could probably come up with some numbers for you about, you know, other options. I mean, we said to extend it 10 hours more per branch.
Right, right.
But I probably could come up with something in, like, five hours more or something like that.
Or even like, for example, if there were certain branches that you had more, community felt a need in that particular area. Like, for example, we had several in South Hurry area that were staffing and really needed more hours there. Whereas, say, I look up the spring rolls, and maybe people there may not have had as many requests for more hours. So, I know it's difficult. Because you're someone that you're picking, when you're losing, but you're picking it based off of community interest.
Right.
So, it's not like they can come to you and say, well, you don't like us, no, we didn't, you know, feel enough interest. Just to give us more information. So, I'm not saying yes or no, what we're going to do, but at least we'll have informed, committed an informed decision.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, I...
For every $100,000, you're talking about two professional or three service staff for our organization. Just put that out there.
Okay.
Would you say again?
For every $100,000, it's the equivalent of two professional or three service. Just putting it out there.
I would like you to come up with a figure that is between the extended hours and the digital together. Not a large figure for each, I don't mean large, don't take that. I don't, I need that to write more, long way, but. Say, for instance, $100,000, and you'd be dividing that equally. You see what I'm saying? I'm just using that as an example, but our figure, but, you see what I'm saying? Trying to say.
Yeah, I can give you some different scenarios and, and, and then, is that, that would be good.
Or even $30,000. What would, how many hours would you get? You could increase for $30,000 plus, I'm ignoring Dana, plus, also increasing the digital. What you would get, some scenarios like that, so already 57.
Okay, Mr. Martin, you had a question? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Any other questions? It looks like we don't want to reach the numbers tonight, but we do have some questions. Further discussion before I jump in. I always like to let you guys go first.
What's the latest we need to...
We'll bring the framework to the next board meeting provided our attorneys can review it that fast. We'll have it pre-filled with some numbers in there. And then use the board to make that decision.
Do you need anything else from us to give you the guidance that you need?
Oh, yes, yes.
I'm going to start with where we currently are and what our current spending is, and then incorporate what I've heard tonight.
Okay.
Just one question. Any further questions for the audience? Because I know we're, we made that opening, which we normally don't do.
Well, one thing I would like to bring up is that we have many, many, many individuals, employees, in the excess levy because we are over formula.
Correct.
So, we need to keep that in mind. And we might be adding more to that list that we are over formula because we'll have to absorb those because of COVID. COVID funds run there. So, we need to think wisely.
Yeah, so I want to make sure I get...
Well-informed decision, yes.
Yes. Yes.
The, the, one question, Mr. Butts. You said for every two professionals, it costs a hundred thousand dollars.
Roughly with benefits.
With benefits.
That were actually.
Okay, now, Mr. Stevens, you said that for six security people, it costs us five hundred thousand. Why wouldn't it cost us three hundred thousand for six?
Usually our staff that we hire are teachers, two hundred day entry level per subs.
But why would we have SROs for two hundred sixty-one, all six of them? They would be mostly two hundred.
Only one of them would, only one of them would.
So.
That, that number is between three sixty and four hundred. I didn't know about benefits or anything else that needed to be added in there. I would feel comfortable probably saying it would be closer to four hundred than five, but.
These safety personnel are not zero-year experience employees.
Yeah, they're.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to see what we have here. And I just knocked off a hundred thousand dollars in one question. Let's see how we'll do with the questions.
Maybe, yeah, okay.
Okay, but I, but I.
Our state average, I think, in Brooklyn were sixty-five thousand for, with benefits on average through the scope of personnel.
We don't need SROs for two sixty-one. We could, we could be hiring them for two hundred. Now, we'd have summer school, maybe, so we need some security there.
We're having, we have one who's going to be year-round, who will be that person. And then the other five will not be. That's the plan anyway.
Okay, and, and I even like the idea of two forty, so that we're not paying them more than two, as two sixty-one. But here's, here's my concern. We've had all these groups who are here and not here tonight. And they've been locked in through two excess levies at the same amount. And they've been loyal and they've been doing this, and they've been supplementing gaps that the educational system doesn't supply. The library, we heard the last gentleman speaking, now I know he's a graduate student, not one of our students. But there are students going to that library and members of this community going to that library. There are people who are keeping their health by being involved in Parks and Rec, which we work. Heaven knows, the health department, the smallest individual group there at twenty-eight thousand five hundred, was a key player in the COVID crisis that we recently went through. And the extension service, and I, Mr. Martin and I both, he's serving now, but I know they are heavily involved in our classrooms in this county. In the schools, Mike, he calls himself Mikey, I'll call him Mike Withrow. Mr. Withrow is out there delivering programs in our classrooms upon request by our teachers for areas that he's enhancing the instruction. And, and kids are getting a chance to participate in the activities in Parks and Rec. We use the parks in our schools in the summers and, and the poorhouse farm and, and the pools for parties at the end of the year and everything. And all of these groups are filling backwards. We don't have a pool in this community for team sports. I think you were a swimmer in school. Where'd you go, Shepherd?
Shepherd.
Shepherd. So we, we, we have these groups that have been steadfast and faithful to us. And I think we should increase by a in the amount, and I don't have a dollar amount. Those four groups and possibly a fifth group that Ms. Long has correctly pointed out is contributing to our community. We do see growth in that excess levy. We, it grows because of the value of the land and the community. And I, I don't think that we can do as much as what the groups would like for us to do. And I think we should improve upon what we do. And I, I hope that when we get down to the, to making decisions, we don't keep them static another year like we have the last two levies. And that's my opinion, and I've been lost around here many a time and respectfully, respect differing opinions as well.
I think our intention is that we want to, we want to, we definitely want to, we just have to look at our, I don't know, sizes. But we want to.
What hurts me when I vote for some, when I say no to something and then halfway through the year, some brand-new thing comes up and we find the money for it. And here we've had a chance to help this other group. I want, I want us to try to help these groups, not to the degree that they want, because we can't afford it. But I think that I, I want to see an improvement because the last two excess levies, I think, have been stagnant and retain the same. And I just think we have to help out the groups that are helping our kids in the classroom.
Just an additional comment too, just to remember that this levy will not take effect until July one twenty-five.
Right, right. You're right. Thank you for that information. And if it doesn't pass, the ramifications will take effect July first, twenty twenty-two.
That's correct.
And I think we also have to keep that in mind as well. Okay, thank you. We are going to not take any action on nine point two. We're going to wait for further information. All right.
Hold on, you, you did take action on nine point two.
Yes, we asked, asked the staff to.
The percent.
Yeah. And just for my information again, we have to, we're going to do this again at the next meeting as further discussion.
You will be presented with the language with the percent plugged in and numbers projecting where we're going to be. And then, then we'll have to determine what goes where.
Okay. Thank you. So, moving on. The next one's mine. Jackie, do you want to run the meeting so that I, because I'll be making motions to start here? We're on nine point three. There's nothing there, just, I don't think. Thank you all for your patience staying here, Jackie.
Elementary school for a K-five facility.
And we're going to discuss the Falling Waters Architectural Plan, right?
Yeah, we're talking nine point three, whatever it says.
Yes, that's discussing after Falling Waters.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. I just want to be clear, we're talking about reconfiguration of the future Falling Waters Area Elementary School to a K-five facility. That's the philosophical approach. And speaking with Mr. Murphy, we're talking about philosophically how we're going to run that facility, not the plan, not the blueprints, not, not those types of things. So I don't want to get confused. I don't think you need to look at that.
It, it was something I asked him to share with you, so that if there were any questions.
I, I just wanted to be clear, we're talking about the philosophical running of the facility on the north end. That is going to be K-two, it's going to have K-two and three-five under one roof on the north end. And that is what our SBA agreement is for. They've agreed to have both under one roof up there.
Okay. I'm going to be recognized here, or I wish to be recognized? Jackie?
Yes, please.
Okay, first, I've jotted down some notes so that I have some organization to my thoughts. First, I'm going to make a statement, then I'll make a motion. I've shared the motion with Mrs. Mannan. I want to first acknowledge my original opposition to splitting up our elementary schools two years ago. I failed in that opposition. The main reason was to, to split the schools and go from a primary school to intermediate school was to incorporate all-day kindergarten, which was half-day at that time. I have modified my viewpoint over the years because of the insight acquired while serving on this board. Some schools, like the one I was trying to preserve with Winchester Avenue with the K-five configuration, would not work as a K-five school efficiently, nor with Burke Street. And there may be others, but I'm not sure. But the motion I'm going to make is not to reconfigure what is going to be built. But here's my motion. The proposed Falling Waters School, being planned to house grades K through five, will have one principal and two assistant principals as its leadership. That's, that's my motion. And I've already shared that with the staff. That's my motion, do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Okay, points for, here are my reasons. One, you'd be getting three administrators for the cost of two. So you'd be saving money. Because you'd have, if, if you had kept the primary school, you'd have one principal here and you'd have another principal at the intermediate school, all under the same roof. Where I, so my first reason is you'd be cutting administrative costs or you'd be getting three of them for the price of two, thereabouts. But my main reason is that we have lost, and this is sincere and I can't emphasize, we have lost, I think, in my opinion, the total child overview. And the students' families have lost the familiarity of one school's personnel when we divided the schools. An intermediate principal once succinctly explained to me the drawback of his school's grade structure. He said, "We know sooner get to know them than they're born." This was back before a fourth, fifth grade. That's what I'm trying to reestablish. Parents are, are more active in the primary schools. They go and prepare teacher conferences, they're more active. And as the child goes on, with this interruption, you don't see that continuity. We need to maintain the momentum through the intermediate grades that is established in the primary grades. Maintain the conversation by not interrupting the flow, which Falling Waters will afford this wonderful opportunity by putting them all under one roof. Some people may say, well, we can't have primary school students intermixing with intermediate students. Look at what they do on the bus. They all get on the same bus in the morning. And then they're delivered, in my instance, that my grandchildren were delivered to Berkeley Heights and then they went on to Old Tribune. And with all the gridlock on the highways today, we could, we'll be cutting back on that process at Falling Waters. Think about the process of having two different principals under one roof. Who's going to run the cooks and the custodians and everything? What my motion says is there's one person, one voice running that school. Now, you'll have two assistants and you can divide the, the work there, but you'll have one voice running that school. And the parents will understand, if the principal stays there for a long period of time, hopefully. The parents will understand what that school expects from them and who to talk to and stuff. You won't have this fragmented approach that we now have with the interruption. I did not track our county's academic ranking over the years. But I know we are not at the top or even in the middle. We have to try some different approaches. Now, these two schools that will be, we're going to help. And I commend the staff for coming up with this idea of the Falling Waters School. But we are going to be alleviating overcrowding at Potomac. I think there are eight hundred and fifty students plus. And this, this idea is that they, that Mr. Stevens has brought to us, is going to alleviate that crowding at that school. And we're bringing two primary schools together, Beddington and Marra. All three schools are doing a good job academically. I, I was looking at the test results. Now, we're not at the top of the state, but I think Potomac's fifth-grade math scores were higher than the state average if my, if my memory is correct and what I was looking at. So we are not, I'm not degrading what is at the north end. We have some well-function, well-led schools there. But it's all going to come under one roof. And I don't want to see, and I don't want to see a wholesale change to our configuration. That's, that's what's wrong with the language that Mr. Stevens correctly read there. I, I looked at it and I thought, I don't want to change, suddenly change something in this county as much as I believe in it. Because I think we need to have a pilot program and see if it will work. See if it, what the pros will be in this process. So I think that this school can serve as a pilot. It's physically, it's going to be built as a K-five school. Let's run it like a K-five school with one principal. And let's see if we can't recapture some of the success that we had back before COVID, back before we split these schools up. Like the principal said, we don't get to know the kids before they're born. We need, this will be an opportunity to get to know the children. Community will get to know the school. And I think that there will be total buy-in. Right now, if you're a K-two school, you see the test results, but you're not part of it because it was in the third, fourth, and fifth grade school where these tests are being given, being administered. And I think that you can develop a family. Everybody's on the same effort trying to teach those children and they're all involved. And you see it. One of the things we miss in this county, we don't involve our elementary teachers in graduation. Now, the students go back, and I know that students go back to Rosemont, high school graduates go back to their schools. Sometimes I think instead of having people at the high school level pass out diplomas, why can't we try to incorporate a few long-term kindergarten teachers? And say, pass out these, and see these people that you impacted and look at them now. We, we need to do something in this county to improve the academic performance of our children. And I think this might be a, might work, but I don't want to impose its county law. Let's try it in this one school and see how it works.
Well, my.
Okay, that's, I'm finished.
My question is to the superintendent. What is the expected student population will be there?
Approximately eight hundred.
Some, similar to Potomac.
Yes, similar to what, be a little bit less than Potomac when it opens its doors, and that would be K-five.
Well, I, I was with Mr. Murphy when the particular principal said to us, they're sooner here than they're on. I barely get to know them. And I know with COVID, that was this feeling for K through two and three-five, that they didn't know those kids at all, really. They couldn't tell you who some of those kids were.
And six, seven, eight, they're all three-grade levels.
And I think that K through five would have parent-teacher conferences, it's all under one roof, busing. I think it would definitely help curb busing. And I think it would save us on positions. One principal, two assistants, it might be three, but I, I do know the only reason we went to that intermediate was because of kindergarten and having to implement four-day kindergarten. So that was the only reason why we did what we did. So, I think it's a.
I have a question, so what was the idea of prayer to Mr. Murphy? Was there an idea from, what was the plan for administration of the schools?
Permission to speak?
Yes, go ahead.
I know that we're in the middle of a motion. You know, so Mr. Murphy has a, has been passionate from the time that I've known him about. about what would be considered neighborhood schools. You know, and if you could fill this this county up with small schools at the end of every cul-de-sac to 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 build up the everybody knowing each other. I you know, I think that that hearkens back to a a time where you know, the community helped with the education and the education helped with the community. So I I think, yeah, I think I understand where he's coming from on this. I I my input is, I will say that it was in two thousand twenty, actually, when this was brought before the board. Mr. Murphy asked the board to amend and reestablish K five elementary schools. And that's at that time, it was motion was not seconded.
Yeah, I seconded.
No, 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 in two thousand twenty. The motion at that time was not seconded and it and it that motion failed at that time. From two thousand twenty to two thousand thirty is is our comprehensive educational facilities plan. And there are stakeholders that make that up. During that process, the stakeholders upheld what the what the board felt at that time. And that that their, you know, the language that they use for that was Berkeley County Schools shall be organized with a grade configuration that's consistent with current and futuristic accepted educational practices through two thousand twenty. We'll continue to operate with primary, pre-K through two, an intermediate, three through five, middle, six through eight, high nine through twelve. Gives numbers, primary school should not exceed four hundred fifty, intermediate should not exceed eight hundred. Those are all things that were outlined in the CEFP. So I have been operating under the the standard that Berkeley County has has wanted, has worked through their stakeholders, has worked through the board, previous boards, and that we would be looking at K two, three, five for elementary. I'm not necessarily a hundred percent in disagreement with what Mr. Murphy is saying. I I think that, you know, I like the fact that in Falling Waters, we're going to have that group under one roof. And I like the fact that those kids are going to get to see the same staff and the staff are going to get to know those kids. You know, so that that part of it I do agree with. I think the fundamental philosophy of the administrative leadership is what he's asking for here. And I just can say that previous boards have actually voted on this and voted against. And our CEFP has also recommended against. His idea of a pilot might not be bad. I I think it's up to you guys to kind of determine if you want to go that route or not.
That CEFP did not address the K through five and K through two and three through five being under one roof.
You're right.
It addresses this concept that we have now. It just seems, when you think about it, it's kind of ridiculous to have two schools under one roof with two different principals. But the cafeteria people, the custodian, answering to who? I mean, I think it's a very confusing concept and
I I want to go on record saying I'm not in disagreement with with what we're saying. I'm just presenting how we've gotten to where we are right now. And we do have a school that is now going to be under one roof. And in the in the near future, hopefully, pretty near future, we're going to have to determine how it is going to be run. And he's asking the board to make a decision on that here tonight.
And when you're trying to save staff, but you're putting two principals under one roof and probably more assistants than two, two and two, probably four. That seems to me a waste of staff.
I think that's what was my question. That's why I was confused. I was like, well, why would Mr. Murphy say that? One school, why would I didn't know there was an idea to have more than one principal at the K through five?
Yes, there is an idea. It's two schools under one roof. That is stupid. I'm sorry.
Prior to prior to
No, I mean, very transparent. To your point, you're going to have people not knowing who they're supposed to be responsible to. I mean, that's just it. It's ludicrous. It's just stupid. Sorry.
Again, I'm not saying that I'm I'm in disagreement with having one principal, which is what his his motion is about. I'm I'm not saying that. It fundamentally, it's a bigger picture philosophically. Are you talking about a K five school? We're going to be able to keep the identity of the K two portion of this school, the three, five portion? I don't know. And that can be conversations that we have a little bit further down the road. I think right now, Mr. Murphy's asking
Under the under the guise of, you know, the assistant administrators, the assistant principals. I mean, you can work with assistant principals that are, you know, one takes care of K one and another one's two, three, and another one's four, five.
Well, what
Or or whatever configuration that, okay, but whatever configuration that looks like, that wouldn't necessarily be the the primary principle.
Well, we need we need to think of a concept in the past, what we did K through five. I mean, it was one school, one principal handled it.
I agree. I do know, I agree.
I don't think the thinking is outside of the box, that we have to go outside of the box to figure out how this will work at K through five school. It's logical.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah, so did I. Yeah, exactly.
My my question is, are we trying to keep the identity of like a Falling Waters Elementary School and a Falling Waters Intermediate School have that same branding? So the principal is the principal of both, so like name-wise, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I I I anticipated you're going to need with eight hundred students. I was looking, I think there are twenty-five regular classrooms and then there are several special ed classrooms. But so you'd have twenty-five times twenty-five and you got your I did the math, but what it is on that one. You have you have a large number of students and one principal with seven hundred students, you're going to, he's going to need assistance. So you're going to see this division upstairs, downstairs, sort of thing, like you did in the days back when we had Rosemont was K five, all the schools were K five. It was when we started building Orchard View, Mill Creek Intermediate, Mountain Ridge Intermediate. We we were we were doing that and it was to try to get have space in the other schools for all-day kindergarten. We used to have half-day kindergarten, probably some of you all went to half-day kindergarten in the day. But At any rate, I I to answer your question, yes, you'll still have that division there. But you'll have you'll have the continuity of the leadership of the school in one person. And that person's influence was spread throughout those students' lives from K through five. And you need that. And I and that's all I'm saying is we'll recapture that continuity. We won't have this interruption that that the children are not getting this total thing.
Well, I'm looking at the high schools where you have one principal and three assistants or whatever, four. And and Martinsburg and Screen Hills are two levels. Sorry, Michael, I coached you right off the top.
I was asking about the like the names, like from the outside perspective of parents. Is it going to be two schools with one principal?
Yes, it'll be it'll be one school.
It'll just be one school.
With one principal, with two, with all the levels.
So make Falling Waters
I'll name it Michael Martin School in Pittsburgh.
K through five.
K through five.
Okay.
With one principal, two assistants.
So whatever it takes for
I don't I don't want to get caught in semantics here, but I don't think it matters if we say that it's one school, K five. If we say it's primary, intermediate, K two, three, five, and there's a hyphen in it or whatever. I think the philosophy of this is that we have one, one lead principal for the school.
Yes.
But Jackie, you can remember this and maybe some of Damon and Michael are parts of the school system. Do you remember open space schools?
Yeah, that's what you're going to do.
Yeah, no, I didn't. I wasn't on the board there. I fought open space schools when I was active in the Teachers Association. But for the longest time, it was like it was etched in stone. We can't, we can't put walls up in these schools. And and it was, it was, it was a monster. And the administration sitting in their secluded office would say, you all go back and try to make it work and everything. And I think it was Florida that we were copying the the plan from. We had an administrator from Florida that came up here. And the poor kids who were, I mean, the the system just fought to preserve this idea of open space schools. And the community and everyone else fought it. Look, Mr. Stevens is right. I fought and I lost. I fought the law and the law won, you know. I I lost back when that CSI was there. But I went out and when I ran for this school board seat, I talked about this. You all were out there with us when we were on the stump and I talked about this, this this issue, this concern. I'm not asking to impose it on everyone, but the community spoke when we were elected. When we were elected, the community spoke. And we do not have to, we can amend prior documents, CSIs and everything else, or whatever they call them, comprehensive educational facilities plan, CEFPs. We can make amendments and we better be making amendments because our scores are not going up. We're sliding down. And we got to start thinking about different approaches. We talked about it tonight about attendance. We talked about it in the past about behavior with Jackie's thing, her in-school suspension area. We've talked about it. This board is talking about change. We're not voting just because the previous board voted that way. We are a new voice on this on this community's board. And we don't have the limitations of saying, well, you got to do it because it's been done this way and everything else. If we can come up with new approaches, then we can, we set policy. We don't direct Dr. Dr. Schooly's office or his, Mr. Stevens on personnel. But we do have a voice in Congress. And that's all I'm asking us to do. Let's try a different approach with this school's bill. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? On the motion. The motion is to have the new Falling Waters Area School a K through five concept. And say with that motion? The motion is, if the proposed planning Falling Waters School being planned to house grades K through five will have one principal and two assistant principals as its leadership. That's what we're voting on.
I I would simply say that we need to look at numbers before we commit to those assistant principals. We need to make sure
I'll make a motion, remember to say at least.
At least.
At least.
I mean, I think it would be based on numbers.
At least two assistant principals. I want to make sure we're clear on the motion because the the motion to me was not as what you're saying is you just want to ensure that the Falling Waters School is a is a school with one principal and two, at least two assistants.
This is not my motion.
Yeah, I'm helping him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One principal and a designated, a number of designated principals based upon data later to be determined. I don't know. Like, that's that's a better way to say it.
I think at least we've covered it.
Everybody understand the motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Favored? Motion carries.
I think we're, yes, Dr. Schooly.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Stevens. The personnel actions dated from Monday, January eighth, two thousand twenty-four as follows. We begin with two new coaching appointments, one paid, one unpaid, one interim appointment due to a leave of absence, two resignations of coaches, seven new extra-duty appointments, two resignations from extra-duty assignments, eight new healthcare procedure appointments, one unpaid leave of absence request, and four new professional appointments. One change of assignment. We have two professionals that are retiring at the end of the school year. We have one revised transfer with an effective date. On the service side, we have five new, excuse me, service appointments. We have five midday runs for extra-duty contracts. One person is rescinding their appointment from our previous board agenda. We did lose one of our service personnel's members in the month of December. We have six resignations of service personnel. Two individuals resigned from a midday run. Actually, line fifty-three, we need to remove from your sheet, so we're removing that line completely of a transfer, leaving only one transfer of service personnel. One individual is rescinding their previous approved transfer to stay at their current location. Two individuals were revising with effective dates for their revised transfer. And six upgrades of service personnel, one into the substitute personnel for service substitutes, twelve new appointments, one resignation of a subservice individual, and nine new substitute teachers for appointment, one individual to remove from this list, and two resignations from the sub-teacher list for a total of eighty-six professional service, coaching, and extra-duty personnel actions with the superintendent's recommendation with one item removed.
Okay. Questions, staff? I'll be by by members of the board for staff.
I have a question. The safety coordinator position, for that position, do the requirements for that, does the person have to have a teaching or a principal or administrative certification?
It does not require administrative certification. I'm not, I don't think it'd require even the teaching on that one either.
Oh, I I doubt it.
That was approved as previously, I don't remember that posted off the top of my head.
I'm just No, I'm just concerned just because it's an administrator from the average school system. This like this, I was hoping it could be somebody, yeah, hoping it was somebody from even outside the school system to take that position because
You're actually
I shouldn't say allowing. If we keep selecting staff to move out of the classroom or even building that we need them in.
I think we actually already voted on this. The only thing that has been revised is the actual rate of the certificate.
But you know, for your concern, very, very astute concern, and we have not allowed people to do that. In this case, there was a special opportunity that's not available all the time. The actual former principal of that building, who was recently retired, had expressed interest in coming back to work a little bit. So that person, we were able to put them in for the remainder of this year to to fill that role. So it's, I think that school's going to go on without missing a beat. We can't say that at every school, though. We're not going to be able to do that.
It's a double-edged sword. You you don't want to hold somebody back if they want to change a pace or a different opportunity versus someone that meets the requirements and their grade where you believe they're doing great and excelling at the same time.
But my 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 point is, give a position that that doesn't require all the things that other positions require in the school system. Now, I can see if there was a position in the board office, like, for example, if there was Miss Perpert's position, where you need certain certifications to have the position, and then it's the pool.
You also have state code, which gives you nine factors in this case. That says you have to hire the most qualified person as Washington Code, regardless if they're in county or out of county in seniority. Those things Uh, those, those things like that do give in-county preferential hiring, make it those.
The minimum qualifications are.
Well, again, that's a, the minimum of bachelor's degree, those qualifications are from the job description that we feel that they need to have to meet. Then you've got all these other nine factors that code says you have to look at.
Are you looking at it from the standpoint of you dial the administrators with, um, the experience? And we're losing someone with, you know, with that in transferring out of that position into a different position? Is that the concern?
I'm simply looking at, I mean, just on my, on my job, there's, there's positions that we post that are open to the public. Some of them, of course, you have to be part of the agency. You have to meet certain requirements. There's some that are very broad and almost anybody can meet, and some are very specific. If this is a very broad position, uh, to me, if, if, if you have two candidates and they both meet all the basic requirements, I'm going to be selecting a person that I don't have to renew from the school system.
You're right. But you're right. But it wa, it wasn't close in this particular case.
And code.
And.
Looking at that way, code would say if they're equal like that, the in-county person is gonna have the advantage. No matter what you say qualification taken.
I'm just saying just based on the county's needs. The county's needs, if we need this person needed in the school system, regardless, whether it's administrator or teacher, whatever, if they need this person, which is somebody that, that's not in that position.
Unfortunately, the grievance board would tell you, you're wrong and you're gonna lose the grievance and end up putting that person in that job.
Because the person.
Has the, has the more factors and the nine factors that we have to hire by. We just, we don't, we don't post separately for internal, external. It's all posted at the exact same time. So those nine factors.
Okay, so then can you post the positions that, um?
We can't limit our employees from applying, no.
No, I'm not saying to limit them from applying. I'm saying make it so that, um, more targeted postings or more, or postings where it's less likely that they're going to be.
No, you're not. You're not. You can't do that.
That's first to go into.
I'm just asking.
You start getting pre-targeting and pre-selecting the way you want for jobs.
I don't need to put it for the person.
But that's the way, that's the way the grievance board looks at it. You start defining, okay, to be a professional employee, to do this, this is the minimum qualifications. So you, you hire for that. When you start adding these things that are need to the grievance board, the appearance comes, okay, we're pre-selecting. We're designing a job for someone in particular with these qualifications to remain.
Yeah, we don't wanna go there because I wanna say something that I would not wanna say.
I don't think that's what he's trying to say.
For example, this is a security position. When we post a position, say for instance, we post.
This isn't security, this is safety.
Safety, sa- safety position. Say, say we posted with somebody with some type of safety experience. That's, that's what I mean for more targeted. That's what, so if you post it with somebody with a safety experience, so you have somebody who's from outside. I come in with, I've got twenty years of safety, blah, 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 whatever I've got, um, under my belt in terms of mission and safety.
That, that would've, that, that, that could've swayed it another way. It could've.
Because you're going based on points.
It could've, but we didn't have that person apply.
Yes. In this sentence, I'm just saying in general, I'm saying for the future, it's like, can we do things that can?
I wanna ask, this, uh, this position before wasn't, I mean, it was a Dan Comer's position.
Correct.
But it had a lot of other things added with it, did it not? He did many other things.
Yeah, there's still other things with it. That's just the title of it. His didn't have, all those things weren't listed in the title.
I have a question to follow up. You just had a nerve here with me, but I appreciate. Years ago, and I've just got, I just spoke against doing things that happened a couple of years ago. But, uh, the board, like when you're getting a new principal, the board would interview the candidate. Do you remember that, Jackie?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they did. I, I remember Bill Butler and Mr. Miller, uh, if we're gonna interview somebody, I forget. I was talking to one of the prince, former principals retired and he, he had to go up to the thing.
That's the only time, that was a unique experience.
Yeah, I know. That, that, that was a unique, yeah.
That I'll ever, ever remember.
And that may have occurred before really eighteen A got written.
Yeah. What I was gonna say is, um, would it be inappropriate for the board after the superintendent recommends a person for certain levels of administration? Would it be inappropriate for the board to talk to the person?
You're getting really, because your obligation and the personnel law is to vote yes or no on the superintendent's recommendation. You can ask the superintendent to bring you back a different recommendation or another recommendation. You can review the materials, but, uh, I don't, you can't get involved in the actual selection process.
Yeah, I think that's superseding our.
Well, I, I just, I was just wondering because.
Once you do that, then you've now privileged.
I, I know Ms. Holland and, and, uh, have no reservations about it. And I know, uh, this position, we, we rejected an upgrade to it. And, and now the process has the person here before us who wants the job and, uh, that. But I, I've just, I was just sitting here thinking, well, if we vote, if, if we're voting up or down, and we have key positions, and I know in the past, we've had some positions filled that we've regretted having voted based upon the superintendent's evaluation, uh, recommendation. Why would, why would we be wrong and say, well, you're recommending, before we vote it up or down, we'd like to at least talk to the person in private for ten minutes?
Because that's not our, that's not our, our call as board members. Our call is to accept or not accept his recommendations. So that's beyond our scope of duties.
You're almost getting into the pre-determining who you would like for a job.
No, 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 no.
But you're venturing that line of when you'd have to recuse yourself because you're now involved in the decision-making process.
Yeah, but you are involved in the decision process when you voted up or voted down, so.
Not necessarily. You're introducing the idea of having a conversation, entertaining a conversation that is considered an interview for the role. And then on top of that, one could argue that because person A got to interview with the board, that person B should also interview with the board. So therefore you are not now then.
You nailed me good.
So please, please refrain from trying to interview.
I'm not gonna rain on Damon. I just said. Thank you. Okay, further questions? I, I have another question, but go ahead. Anything else? This gets back to vacancies. And in the newsletters on Friday, we have, we have two-hundred-and-fifty-some permanent subs. But there's a number up at the top of that of like five-hundred vacancies or something.
Yeah, that was openings.
That's the number of postings we've done for those openings.
Pardon me?
So there've been five-hundred different openings and transfers and moves around within the county or postings since last April in the professional side.
Oh, so that's not vacancies?
No. We've had, it was vacant at one point, but then filled or moved around.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what that.
That's the volume, that's the volume the department's handling in that professional side. That's like services, probably around four-hundred now. I didn't pay attention one last week or more.
Okay, okay. We need a motion, right, Mr.?
Someone second.
Okay, the motion for us, further discussion on the motion. All those in favor of the motion to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Ayes have it, very much in the doctor. Thank you, Dr. Schooly. Board announcements, correct? Okay, I'd like to announce, and I hope the PR people are listening to me back there.
She's trying, Matt.
Bowie State, the American Legion is one of the wonderful organizations. I don't know if any of you've been to Bowie State, but it's, uh, it's a great activity. They are now working with the counselors to find candidates for Bowie State, the American Legion. So please, um, put that somewhere that let the public know that that's going on. Um, I, I know.
Do you have additional information that we can have to?
I, I don't have anything. I asked, asked one of the counselors at one of the high schools, and I think it's for students in their, do you know?
The end of their junior year, going into their senior year.
Yeah, it's, it's a great program. That's Monday announcement. Other announcements?
This Sunday, the Reverend Muddler is coming to do a scholarship dinner to be at the Holiday Inn. Contact the scholarship committee for tickets.
Pardon me?
Contact the scholarship committee for tickets. I'm going Facebook and I think it'll land.
Yeah, they're, they're selling. They, they're going. Mr. Stevens?
Any other? Nope. Well, first of all, I wanted to again say welcome to Carla. Um, I think she's gonna be a wonderful addition. You know, it's still, still will talk to Elaine, you know, yeah, I miss her, but I'm looking forward to relationship, to establish a relationship with Carla and move forward with our, uh, communication department there. I wanna say congratulations to, uh, to Hannah Horner, who we met tonight. She's fantastic. And I have actually seen her in action in the hallways and the kids gravitate to her. And, you know, some people have it and some people don't. And it's really hard to describe what it is, but she has it, so.
So does her son.
So does her son. He's quite stalker. I met him one other time. He didn't remember me, but, um, yeah. He was looking at me like he, eh, I recognize you from somewhere, but, um, wanted to, uh, talk about report cards being available today. Make sure you, uh, uh, parents should check your students' online platforms. Most of the district is using Schoology. Um, but the report cards are available today. If you have any issues with that, contact your school's principal, um, or main office to be able to get an answer, uh, to what's going on there. Law enforcement, uh, day is, uh, is tomorrow. Although we appreciate our law enforcement every single day, uh, we do wanna make sure that we say our thanks. So if you see a law enforcement officer, not just the ones that are working in our schools, but if you have an opportunity to say thank you or hello to one that's in our schools, uh, that would be, um, a great opportunity. Also, this is school board appreciation month, so I'd like to say how much I appreciate the work that, that this board puts in. I really, uh, uh, believe that what is best for Berkeley County as a whole and Berkeley County students is at the heart of everyone here, and I, I do appreciate that. I wanna talk about our next community outreach. Uh, we've tried to post this out there and, uh, someone brought up a good idea about possibly having an interpreter available, so we, we have, uh, arranged to, to have an interpreter available for non-English speaking families who, um, is gonna be able to help with their information. That is gonna be January seventeenth, which is next Wednesday at five-thirty. That's at the Martinsburg Two Thousand Rec Center.
That's on Woodbury Avenue.
Is Martinsburg, it's Berkeley Two Thousand Rec Center. I don't know the actual address of it, I'm sorry. Dates to, dates to remember, dates to remember. Coming up, um, Thursday, January eleventh, uh, parent-teacher conferences for our primary schools. Uh, it's a, it's a mid-year, uh, check-in. It's very important. Also heard somebody mention, uh, Dr. King. Martin Luther King Day is on Monday next week and our schools, uh, all offices and schools will be closed on Monday, January fifteenth. Uh, on Thursday, January eighteenth, we will have our middle school parent-teacher conferences. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Monday, January twenty-second. We are gonna start at six o'clock on that day as well, because we're gonna do a, um, we'll open up with discussion about superintendent's evaluation. Just like we had today, there'll be a work session to discuss that. That will most likely be an executive session to be able to answer some, some things there. Uh, we are on a timeline, trying to make sure we meet everything and not have to rush as we get into February. But we'll also have our second calendar, uh, hearing at six forty-five that night. So timeline will be very similar to what we had tonight. So having said all of that, um, things went well today. Everybody was safe. I appreciate, uh, the team that was out driving the roads last night and this morning, just to make sure. Uh, we did operate on a two-hour delay today. Everything went off without a hitch, so.
And one thing I forgot to mention, at the next board meeting, you know how I pass out the school visitation cycle? I'll be doing that at the next, uh, meeting.
I thought we were keeping our cycle.
Well, we, we kept it till the semester changed and now we're gonna flip it. Motion to adjourn. Second? Motion moved and seconded. All those in favor of signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. Thank you.